Fourteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting of the Westwood School Committee to Order. Um, we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, I'd like to recognize Westwood Media Center, which is live streaming this meeting and recording for later viewing on its platforms. And as always, we thank Westwood Media Center for its partnership. Okay, jumping into the superintendent's report.
Sure. So, thank you. We have a very lengthy agenda with a whole bunch of things. So, we're gonna just jump right into it today. Uh, and we're actually gonna start with the class of two thousand twenty-five decision profile. Uh, so I'm gonna invite Caroline Higgins, our Director of Guides, to come down. Uh, and she has some slides to walk through with you from the class of two thousand twenty-five. And you can just tell me when to advance them.
Hi, everybody.
Hey, Caroline.
Hi, Caroline. Nice to see you all. So, I'm happy to talk to you guys today through the Westwood College Decision Profile Overview. This is actually a document that we send out at the end of the school year in June. But I'm just gonna talk about a few key takeaways and just see if you guys have any questions. So, in terms of the postgraduate plans for the class of two thousand twenty-five, there were two hundred and eight graduates in the class, um, and ninety-four percent will be continuing their education. So, ninety-three percent are enrolled in a four-year college or university, and one percent are enrolled in a two-year college. And then six percent reported other, which typically means military, gap year, or employment. So, this is some interesting data. Um, and one thing to note is we take all of our data from Naviance. So, Naviance is a web-based tool that we use to help us in our college counseling. And it aggregates data from the last five years for us when we're helping students through the college process. But one thing that is a little tricky about Naviance is that it relies on self-report in terms of student acceptance, waitlist, or rejection. And so, the acceptance numbers are off by like, I wanna say, two to three percent, just full transparency here. So, these are approximate. But the attending numbers and the application numbers are one hundred percent accurate because the high school guidance office has to send transcripts out to the attending schools for people. So, these are the top ten schools in terms of number of applications received from Westwood High students last year. So, I just wanted to make sure that you guys saw this because I thought this was really interesting data. And we have seen very similar top-ten lists in the eighteen years I've been here, I will say. There's a few surprises in the next slide, I would say, and the next slide will actually be the attending schools for the class of two thousand twenty-five. So, UMass Amherst has, for a very long time, been the most frequently attended school. It's a great value for the money, right? So, we had fourteen students attend last year, and that's pretty typical for us. Followed by Northeastern, Fairfield, Quinnipiac, Boston College, Stonehill. And the numbers are kind of smaller, but I will say that a school that has crept up is Merrimack and Quinnipiac. Our two relatively new schools in the top-ten for us in terms of attending students. Um, and I would attribute that to student success at these schools. It just takes one kid to go to a school, love it, and report back to their peers for the numbers to jump. So, that is a little bit of an overview of the top-ten schools that our students apply to, and then the top-ten schools that our students are attending. And then finally, I just wanted to share one really interesting and perhaps what I would call distressing emerging trend in college admissions. So, we're seeing a rising number of schools going to early decision and regular decision plans. For those of you that don't know, early decision is a binding program. So, you can only apply to one school early decision, you hear back early, and the catch is you won't have your financial aid package until sometimes later in the game. So, many schools used to be early action, early decision, and regular decision, and we've seen an increasing number of schools taking away that early action plan. So, it's solely early decision and regular decision. The reason this is problematic is because, um, the admission data shows us that it is far easier to get accepted via early decision than regular decision. So, it really decreases a student's chances at the regular decision round. Um, and to me, that just doesn't seem equitable. There's been a huge increase in the number of Westwood students applying early decision to schools. So, you'll see almost forty percent of our class last year applied early decision. We've never seen numbers like that. Um, it's typically ten, fifteen percent. So, the kids are certainly catching on, um, but it makes some of our counseling a little bit tricky because of that financial piece for parents. So, you can see here fifty percent of kids who applied early decision one were accepted to their school. Early decision two is another fascinating trend that has emerged in the last five years. ED-two is like, "I'm sorry, I didn't get into my first choice, but I love you second best, and now you are my new commitment." Um, and so fifty-seven percent of kids were accepted ED-two. And then early action has always been a huge trend at Westwood. I would say that has not shifted. Sixty-six percent of our students were accepted at the early action round. But just in general, I feel this is an important admission trend to pay attention to.
Thank you, Caroline. Uh, thank you for being here, and I just wanted to open up if there are any questions from the committee about this or anything that was in the report.
I have one question about this in particular. So, with early decision, I know you won't know your financial package. But some schools will allow you to back, will some schools allow you to back out if you don't get enough?
Yes. So, the caveat is that you can back out for financial reasons. Um, and we have seen that in increasing numbers, um, but to be honest, it's just a bad look.
A bad end result.
Exactly. And so, I'll be transparent and say this hasn't happened, uh, in particular at Boston University. It's one of the most, if not the most, it's expensive private institution in the nation, upwards of a hundred thousand dollars a year. So, not last year, but in years past, there have been a number of students who've had to back out of their ED agreements, and we've actually seen a little shift in BU's read on our ED students. Um, and so, they're paying attention to this data.
You mean in, I'm sorry to, like, in, as a trend, students coming from Westwood may or may not accept that ED, and they'll back out for financial reasons?
Correct.
And that's a bad look for Westwood?
Correct.
But it's a possibly a good decision for that kid and family.
Correct. All the, all those things are true.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And do some schools, and I think some schools will give you a pre-read, right, of your financial package, but it's not binding?
It's not, not necessarily a pre-read. Um, there's something on financial aid websites on colleges that estimate a family's contribution essentially, but it's not exact. But, but yes, you can get pretty good data in advance.
Okay. I agree on the equity piece. ED drives me nuts.
Yeah. It's, it's tough, and when you're trying to help students make the best decision, you're sort of caught between, you know, yes, I know this would be your best chance of getting in, and I also know that financially, this could be really difficult for different families. So, it can be challenging.
Are you having those conversations with parents and caregivers?
We're trying. So, we had a financial aid night last year. We have an in-person financial aid night, um, this month, in fact, on October twenty-third. So, we have a representative from MIFA, which is the Mass Education Financing Authority, coming. He'll be here, little plug if anybody's out there listening. Um, so, we, we do try to have those conversations. But finance, financing college is a tricky personal thing, family by family, I'll say.
And are you, I know this is probably a tricky question, but given the environment, federal cuts, less foreign students, what are you hearing from schools related to money piece? Because they obviously have to balance the books. Or maybe they're not publicly talking about this.
Yeah. I mean, I wouldn't say I'm able to speak to that, except to say, I think there were some, there were a lot of wait, there was a lot of waitlist movement, and I think it was a result of that. There were quite a few kids who got off the waitlist in May last year, and, um, we don't typically see that. And so, I think there was some movement because of that policy piece.
Um, you, in the survey of ninety-three, one percent and the six percent?
Yeah.
Um, do you get any breakdown of that six percent? I'm so curious how many, personally, I'm just curious how many kids do a gap year.
Yeah, so, we, we do, it's such a small number of students in that six percent that we do actually know individually what each kiddo is doing. Um, and it's actually a very small number of students at Westwood, um, taking what I would call a true gap year. So, as far as I know, there's one student taking a true gap year, and I'm actually in touch with him right now, and he's applying to college, you know, with a fresh set of eyes a year later.
Great.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
No problem. That was a lot of fun.
All right. Um, so, next thing under Superintendent's report is, uh, an update on our curriculum and program review. So, I'll turn it over to Caitlin.
Yes, so, thank you. You can go ahead to the next slide. In Westwood, like, like most districts, I believe, we have a curriculum review process, curriculum review cycle. Every six to eight to ten years, um, we examine each program in sort of this ongoing cycle to make sure that what we are doing is high-quality, that it's rigorous, that it's aligned with the state standards, and, as you see on the slide, most importantly, that we're yielding excellent outcomes for kids. So, the way we do this is through three different phases. It starts with the audit and analyze phase, which is very much a self-study. What are we currently doing? What, what's our programming look like? What curriculum are we using? Um, and what's our student data that we can, um, glean from our current programming? And then you move into identifying where are some gaps, what are the areas we'd like to improve upon, strengthen, grow in our program? And let's figure out what is, what are the best practices there and make a plan for what that might look like here in Westwood. And then finally, um, a report is released with recommendations around what are our priorities, and we spend the next several years implementing those different priorities and assessing the progress. Did it have the impact that we thought it would have when, when we set out? So, this is what's ongoing, um, every year. If you don't mind going to the next slide. This is, we're, we're very busy with our curriculum reviews. This year, um, I'm gonna share with you tonight, we're launching a K-to-five literacy review. We are launching a nine-through-twelve guidance review. Last year, we launched the performing arts and visual arts reviews, and so those are currently in progress, still, um, in their audit and analyze phase starting this year. The wellness and world language, library, media, digital literacy, and computer science reviews, all wrapped up in the last two years, three years, um, with recommendations. And so, those are very much in the implementation stages. We're using those recommendations. We are building things into the budget cycles and working on implementing, um, those recommendations. And then up next, after, perhaps next year, and there's a conversation to be had about do we wait a little bit longer as science and engineering? They are hitting about the ten-year mark in terms of last review was completed, I wanna say, in twenty sixteen, um, with recommendations. However, we know that there's a new MCAS science assessment coming along in the next year or two. And so, we, we're having the conversation of, we don't wanna get too far into a review if the goalpost is gonna change. So, that would be the area by, by time which would come next. And I'm not quite sure if I'm saying that we're launching it next year or if we wanna pause for another year on that. So, visual and performing arts, they, um, these are two separate reviews happening, but they're very much synced up in terms of where they are in the cycle. So, I, um, am sharing them both on this slide here. Last spring, both departments worked through their departmental visions. They each had a vision statement, and they took it through a process with the whole department of, does this still match what we are here to do? Does this match with our updated standards? And then once the portrait of a graduate was finalized, that added another layer to look at, how does this, um, lift up and support the portrait of a graduate, and do we need to revise it? So, both, um, departments have a new updated vision that they're working from. And this year, they are going to be working to complete that audit and analyze phase. So, what that will look like this year is administering student and family surveys to start gathering student data, family data around the impact of these programs. The whole document review piece, we need to, um, compile all the curriculum maps and materials and data that we can find so that we're really looking at the full scope of the program. We are also excited to engage in walkthroughs, peer observations, and shadowing students to just add that level of, um, understanding to, um, the data that we're collecting. And so, what will happen then after the holidays, um, in early spring, late winter, is the analysis piece. Now that we've gathered all of this information, to what extent is it meeting our needs? And to what extent is it standards-aligned and rigorous? And through that process, we'll identify some of the focus areas, priorities, or a theory of action for how to move forward in each of these areas. So, that's the update on visual and performing arts. K-to-five literacy is a little bit of a unique story here. So, the last literacy or ELA curriculum review was done pre-pandemic, and the recommendations came out in January of two thousand twenty. One of the key findings for the K-to-five program was that the curriculum and the resources that we're using are really varied between classrooms and grade levels. There's a lot of, um, there's a lot of different programs, there's a lot of different resources, there's a lot of things that are homegrown or teacher-specific that are being used. And so, a recommendation back in two thousand twenty was that to address this inconsistency of curriculum being used across classrooms and grade levels to implement the Teachers College Reading and Writing Units of Study consistently across the grade levels. Well, in two thousand twenty, the pandemic happened. This recommendation did not get actioned right away, um, as we learned how to, you know, teach remotely and all of those fun times. And also, in the meantime, since two thousand twenty, we have this evolving literacy landscape where we are learning more and more about the science of reading. We are examining, um, the practices that we're using, especially in the early literacy curriculum. And there is legislative action at the state level around identifying specific, high-quality elementary curricular resources. And if that legislation passes, we would be required to choose from a list of curricula to use. The Teachers College Reading and Writing Units of Study are not on that list. So, in this landscape, as we are examining what's working well about what we have and where do we wanna see, um, where do we wanna see some growth or some change? This is where we're launching the K-to-five literacy focus. We want teachers to have the best tools to use the job. We also don't want to be caught off guard if there is some legislative action that says that we need to make a change. We wanna be able to have a thoughtful process and really examine what's out there. The, I also think, I wanna, I wanna note that for six through twelve, those grades when they came out of the two thousand twenty curriculum review had their own findings and their own recommendations for action, and they have been able to work through those. They're, they're working on them currently. I mean, the pandemic paused things for everybody, but since then, um, they've been able to, um, make progress on the recommendations made in that curriculum review. And so, that's why I'm not focusing this review as a K-to-twelve, but really in the area that, um, needs to be reexamined due to the shifting context.
So, the goal of the K-to-five is to figure out, if we're not using the Teachers College Reading and Writing, what we are going to use?
Yes, and I, I think, um, I would wanna leave the door open and not presuppose, but do a study of what's working well, what do our teachers appreciate, appreciate about the current resources, and then, um, determining where, what's the next step from here.
I can hold my question.
Well, what we have planned for this, um, for the timeline for the K-to-five literacy is launching a steering committee this fall. So, I'll be coming to the school committee to ask if anybody's interested in serving on this steering committee. Uh, we will all, again, be administering student, teacher, and family surveys around their experience with our literacy programming, compiling the documents, the curriculum maps, the materials that folks are using. Throughout the winter and spring, we want to conduct those walkthroughs and peer observations. We wanna be researching the best practices and what high-quality curricular materials are available. And by the end of this year, we would love to identify a couple of promising programs that we'd look to pilot during the next school year. And then, in twenty-six, twenty-seven, we would plan for a robust pilot experience, trying, trying to give our teachers a lot of experiences to interact with the different programs, lab sites to practice teaching in different styles, um, so that it is a truly robust process and we're able to get some great feedback from our teachers around what, what is working well in our context. Did you have a question about K-to-five literacy before I move on to guidance?
I did, if you don't mind, sorry.
I know.
So, does that, um, finding from two thousand twenty stand related to the, um, kind of variance in the tools that are being used, um, across K-to-five literacy?
It's hard for me to answer that definitively. I, I feel like, um, since then, we have made strides in using the Teachers College Reading and Writing Units of Study. There are also revised units that some of our grade levels have been piloting. So, I do think we are coming, becoming more consistent, and I don't know that it has been a focus before my time here.
Got it.
I think I have to claim inexperience on, on being definitive.
Thank you.
Caitlin, can I ask a question as well? So, since you've had to kind of do this split, like, K-to-five, six-to-twelve, is it gonna stay that way? Like, are you now gonna have to add another, like, thing into the rotation, or will you merge them back together?
You're thinking very far ahead.
I'm sorry. I was just curious.
No, I, what ideally, ideally, no, it would be a K-to-twelve look so that we can encourage the vertical alignment. And maybe it means that we, when we are doing the next K-to-twelve ELA literacy review, maybe we, we're not focusing as much on elementary, maybe we're really focusing in on the upper grades. Or maybe we extended a couple of years, so we aren't looking at a six- or eight-year cycle. We're really, we let it go for ten years, and maybe the upper grades have gone even a little longer, um, to try to get us back in sync.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just gonna jump in here too and talk about the, um, you know, Caitlin talked about it, but the potential and highly likely legislative impact that's gonna, uh, I mean, this has the backing of the governor's office, has the back, the secretary's office, has the backing of the, the heads in the legis, I mean, it, it's pretty much a foregone conclusion. There's gonna be some form of literacy bill passed in the, in the very near future that would necessitate a change. So, it's better for us to be on the front, front end of this.
So much for local control.
Yeah, I would say the new commissioner is behind it as well, too, so.
Of course he is.
But that's just for K through five, not?
Yeah, just, just in the, it's really K through three is where the primary focus is, but, um, but we're not gonna do K-three independently from K-five, so.
Okay.
And I got the sense that the implementation of the, um, units of study curriculum was not, I would say, unevenly incorporated. Oh, sorry, I was just saying that the units of study curriculum was that, um, implemented, it sounds like it was inconsistently implemented, or how would you explain that? How would you describe that?
What I would love to do is get back to you with more information. The units of study has, has been around in the district for a long time, for many, many years. I can't speak to how it was initially launched. But what I am coming to understand is that we, I don't know that it was ever said, this is, this is the program. Rather, it's, here is a resource, and so, folks that wanted to use it could use it, but not everybody was using it, which led to sort of the inconsistency in the decision that, no, we need to say, this is what everybody is using, and, and make sure that we provide the training and the resources to do that. And I'm not sure, after that two thousand twenty recommendation, if that next step happened to make sure that folks have the training and the resources to fully implement. All right, and then the last one to launch this year is guidance. And this is a nine-through-twelve specific because that is the only place where we have a guidance program. This is the first time that the guidance program is being invited into the curriculum review process. So, um, earlier, I said every content area goes through a review, and I guess that wasn't totally accurate because we haven't yet done one for guidance, but, um, I'm excited that we are doing it now. Because it's the first time a guidance program review has happened, and because a guidance program is very different from a K-to-twelve math or a, um, you know, a science curriculum, we decided early on that we would like some external support in making sure that our, um, review is really robust and strong. So, last spring, we met with three different external consultants, um, to figure out who might be the best partner to work with. I'm happy to say that we've decided to partner with Masca, the Massachusetts Associations, or Massachusetts School Counselors Association, rather, um, to help us launch the audit and analyze phase. So, what Masca will do is they have a team, um, a diverse team of folks who will conduct our beginning audit phase, basically, the document collection. They will be administering staff and student surveys. We are co-creating the family survey along with them. They will conduct a few focus groups for us after the holidays in January. We're looking at for the focus groups, and then give us a draft report in March and work with us to finalize their report and recommendations, um, in early spring. So, once we have that report in hand is where we take the reins back, and we convene our steering committee to review their report, prioritize the recommendations that they have made for us, and create a plan for how do we, how do we move forward and implement the recommendations. Again, here's that Masca timeline. The document collection is already started. We are looking at November to get the surveys implemented for students and faculty and families. The family survey might lag a little bit behind the student and faculty just because it's still in creation. By end of December, that document collection and survey windows will close, and in January, we have the focus groups. Yes, and then the draft report comes our way, and we take it from there. So, that is this year's plan for the guidance review.
Great.
Are there any questions on curriculum reviews in general or in specific?
I think I sent you an email about the survey. I'm glad you're doing the surveys. One question I'm very interested, including is percentage of people in juniors and seniors that use outside college advisors. I think that'd be important data to collect.
Thank you for that. Yeah, with the co-creation with Masca, we can definitely try to get at that. My wondering is around crafting the survey so that we can make sure that we have actionable feedback around it. Because I know, um, we know that a lot of families are using the college counseling, and what, what I think we really wanna find out is, what's the value add for families? And, and what is maybe something that our guidance program can be doing to fill that need for families so that it's not an option, or not necessarily, not an option, uh, not a need, or not, not, it doesn't feel like a need to.
Yeah, I think the why would be really informative on that.
Yeah.
Why they felt like they had to.
Shall we continue forward?
Yes.
All right. Um, we are on to our student travel updates, so I'm gonna invite, um,
Student travelers?
Our student travelers, yeah. Our student and staff travelers to come down. I wasn't sure if Amy was joining as well, too, so, but.
You're more than welcome to. You joined us in Europe.
It's just like this summer.
She can sit here so they can be on mics?
Where would you like us?
Yeah, I would say, yeah, sort of gather around there so we can grab you on the mic there. Um, probably makes the most sense. We can, yeah, I think that works.
There you go.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll hover.
I'll hover.
I promise you, the travel is more organized in this exact moment in time right now.
It's very organized.
Hello.
Oh, actually, I should put up the right presentation. Sorry about that.
No, that's okay. Um, one thing I should say is that we were unable to be joined by Ms. Kayla DiBiase. She, um, was planning on coming, but unfortunately won't be here. So, Sheila is here to support, um, us as we walk through both of the travel trips that we did this summer. Um, I was not a part of the Dominican Republic trip, so I'm excited to hear a little bit more about it. But I'll be walking us through the Europe trip as well, so, here to support. Excellent.
We're excited to talk about international travel and travel-based learning in the context of the Portrait of a Graduate, which we launched last year, particularly leaning into the engaging locally and globally competency. We really see that travel-based learning and place-based learning gives students a really authentic way to explore different communities and perspectives, to persevere in the face of challenges, both challenges they anticipated and did not anticipate facing, and also provides some really authentic opportunities to give back while doing so. So, we're very excited to talk to you about how we got to the point of launching two trips last year and to talk to you about what's next. So, in terms of just a brief review, um, in fall of two thousand twenty-three, we introduced a partnership with EF coming out of the COVID pandemic. In spring two thousand twenty-four, you approved two travel-based experiences, and we launched our application process. And the first of those two trips happened last year. We had a service-based learning trip to Dominican Republic during J-term and a trip to Western Europe in July. Um, and so, you'll notice that it really takes, like, eighteen months to decide to do this and then do it. And actually, the timeline during which we did it the first time is not a thing we would recommend doing again. But we managed, and we're really excited to talk to you about what those experiences were like.
Excellent. So, I'm gonna kick this off for us, even though I was not a part of planning or attending or anything about this trip. So, the group that went to the Dominican Republic, if you wanna chime in at any point, feel free.
Twenty-four students participated during J-term.
Yes, and that was led by Ms. DiBiase, joined by Andrew Miller, Joanna Bengal, and Evan Rao. So, a really wonderful group of human beings. All students were rising sophomores, juniors and seniors, excuse me, you all are getting older now. And so, you all flew in. Do you wanna talk a little bit about your itinerary, what that looked like?
Um, so, we flew in on the first night to San Francisco, and we just kind of spent one night there. We did a walking tour of the city the first day. And, yeah, I think maybe say it more on the next slide. Oh, yeah, so, we did a guided tour of the city. And, um, then the next day, we traveled to our first service location where we got. our first service location, where we got to tour the area that we were going to be helping out with, and meet the people who we were going to be spending the next couple of days with. We got to work on a farm in the first couple of days, we planted a field, we helped to plant different seeds, and learn about their process of farming, and how it's a lot different than ours. Then the next day, we continued with that service project, we went back to the farm another day, and we got to go on a whitewater rafting excursion, which was so fun, it was such an amazing experience.
I wish you could zoom in on their faces.
It was kind of terrifying, but it was so cool. And then the following day, we got to go to a pottery class, and learn a little bit more about the local culture and their customs, and we got to visit a museum, which talked about the Dominican Republic and so much history that we hadn't previously ever gotten to learn about, which was so cool. And then we got to visit another farm, and they just gave us a tour, and it was such an incredible experience to see how their farming was so much different than ours, and hear about their importance of what they view as the most important aspects of life, and it's very similar to us, and also, in many ways, very different from us, and it was such a cool experience to get to hear about how their culture is so incredibly interesting. And then, yeah, day five, we went to the Mari Posa Girls Foundation, which I think was a really big highlight for everyone on the trip, that was personally my favorite part of the trip, we got to spend two days at this girls' school, we got to go to classes with them, we went to, I think, four different classes, got to tour the school, we helped to paint the school a little bit, and we got to hear about what their initiative was, which is really just about empowering and uplifting girls, especially people whose circumstances are so different than ours, and have so much less opportunity than we do, and how they continue to uplift them, and teach them that they really can do anything. So I think that was definitely one of the most rewarding parts of this experience. And then following that, we also got to go on a SERP lesson, which was so cool, I was, it wasn't my strong suit, but it was very interesting. And then our last day, we got to tour the mangroves by boat, and got to just spend a lot of time with not only people from the Dominican Republic, but people from our school, who I don't think we otherwise would have really gotten to know and bond with, so it was incredibly rewarding experience, and I'm really grateful I got the opportunity to go on the trip. And then these are just some pictures from the trip.
It looks amazing. Excellent, I should mention, I'm Amber Parker, by the way, I'm one of our school counselors, so I feel like a lot has been talked about, and I'm really excited to present with Liam today, who is one of our attendees, about the London, Paris, Milan, Florence, and Rome trip. We originally were sold a LPR, London, Paris, Rome, and they just tacked in two cities, so we had a really wonderful trip, I was joined by Ms. Amy Davenport, Kelly Salantano, Catherine Griffin, Kayla DiBiase, and Nate Castello as well, so we had a wonderful trip, we had 38 students, so a little bit bigger, which was fantastic, and provides a really great insight into so many different students that I don't get to see every day, so it's a really special privilege to be able to work with everyone, and I know Ms. DiBiase felt that way about your whole trip as well. So we flew from Boston to London, that was an experience.
Definitely, yeah.
Yep, so we learned a lot about traveling, A, in big groups, traveling with delays and layovers, and how to navigate all of that in foreign countries without cell service in every single moment.
Played a lot of card games.
We played a lot of card games, yes, so we had some early bonding right off the bat with our very late delay in Boston, Logan. We'll, we'll walk through the photos, and yeah, if you go to the next slide, perfect, so we hit the ground running, we landed around 10:00 AM in London, and we immediately went to the, the river in London, and spent the day exploring, students got to travel on the London Eye and walk around and explore. The beauty of this trip generally is that it provided a lot of opportunity for individual exploration, which the students entirely earned, so they had a lot of independent and free time to learn about the city and culture by experiencing it firsthand. Do you want to talk about London a little bit?
Of course, yeah. So we came in on the red eye, obviously, everyone's, you know, completely tired and everything, just trying to push through the next day, and I just remember like, kind of walking over the bridge and everything in the London Eye, and, you know, seeing everything around there, and it was, it was very, very nice to kind of have that, that freedom to experience things on my own, and the guided tours were nice, obviously, and everything, but having that, that freedom's great, obviously.
Absolutely, the second day, we did a walking tour of London, which you can see here, so we walked around like the King's Park, and that's Buckingham Palace, we unfortunately did not see any royalty, which we were very much so looking forward to hopefully seeing, but that is A, okay. We then took the train to Paris the next day, so that was exciting, we got to go through the Channel, which was an experience for many, and we spent the day, we went to the Louvre, some students went to Versailles, which you can, Liam is focal picture here at Versailles, looking over at the beautiful gardens, and really just immersing ourselves in these historical places and exploring. We had students, we challenged them to create, do the best recreation of anything, any painting or sculpture in the Louvre, so that was incredibly impromptu, they're probably going to be terribly embarrassed that I'm showing this, but it was such a highlight that I had to share it. And really just what you're seeing are pockets of joy, and in the midst of this is such experiential learning, and, you know, navigating busy streets and pickpockets, and things that we don't walk through, walking around Westwood, and, and just dealing with language barriers, we couldn't always communicate with everybody that we, you know, met along the way, and so I think it was a really nice experience for students to be able to challenge themselves, we had a lot of students who have taken French and are at the high school, and so they got to practice a lot of that, which was really lovely to see, and really helpful as well in many moments. Next slide, then we hit our world tour, so important image here in the lower left-hand corner is the, we went on a walking food tour of Milan, I tried some of the most interesting foods that I don't know if I will try again. I don't know about you, and that is the longest cheese pull, it was the most impressive thing I have seen in many, many days, but we got to see the Duomo.
We had mozzarella from Buffalo.
Correct, oh yes, that was delicious. So very different experience, as you can tell from the Dominican Republic trip, this is a world tour of, in a different way, we got to visit Florence, it did rain, but the sun came out, and that's one of those moments where like, what do you do when 100 people are coming up to you in the middle of a Florence street, asking you to buy umbrellas, do you buy one?
Yes.
I buy one.
Yes, we all did. The answer is definitively yes.
In a discerning manner.
Correct. And then we traveled to Rome, and I think Rome was a really special place, it was the home city of our tour, tour guide, Tomas, and so in Italy, we really got to see him come to life, and share a lot about his culture and his family, we learned where pine nuts come from, and how much love.
How to harvest them.
How to harvest them, just on the side of the road, I had no idea.
It was also Vatican was celebrating the Jubilee, we got to walk through the Holy Doors, which you can only do it once every 25 years, that felt very special.
That felt very special. Lower right-hand corner, those are students in both Italy and in Vatican City, so in technically two different countries holding hands, which I think was a really special experience, we learned a lot about how to drink from water fountains, and a handful, it was the hottest eight, nine days of my life with students, and we also learned how to make tiramisu, which was very special, I don't know if I'll do it successfully, but it was a really beautiful, heartwarming tour, is there anything else that I missed?
I think I want to just include some personal experiences as well, there's just so many little moments that I think characterized the trip for me so much, I remember in London, the second night, my roommates and I just watching YouTube videos all night, and not getting any sleep, and then, you know, being wrecked for the, the Versailles tour. I think, I think I had four or five cups of coffee that day. Coffee was great, by the way, of course. And I'm, you know, horsing around at dinnertime, obviously, it was great, and I just got to talk to people, you know, and be, I think, I feel like I made friends with people that wouldn't have, you know, talked normally in school and everything, which I thought was great. I remember also in London, me and my friend running off to go find the Gibson Garage, the, you know, big famous guitar store in, in London, which is really cool, just able to squeeze it in before dinner, you know, and, you know, obviously, everything was, everything's great, phenomenal trip overall.
Along the way, Ms. DiBiase, I cannot take any credit for this at all, she withheld, like, she took care of this in every single location, and so essentially, if you'd like, if anyone would like to, you can track all of our photos, the students probably don't want me to share that, because they don't like all of the photos that are on there, they're like, you took the worst photo of me ever, but on our Polar Steps, you can literally track us every single place that we went, and so it gives a like geolocation to all the special places that we got to stop along the way, with specific details of all of the details of every single day as well.
So our vision is that, over the course of four years, we'll be able to offer a really broad range of experiences for students, and right now, we were sort of establishing a rhythm, I don't know that it will be the rhythm moving forward, but we really hope so, and so our goals are, our goal is that students will have these experiences that enrich what they're learning in the classroom, stretch their perspectives, and expand their worldviews, and provide some authentic opportunities for service, and so the dream would be that, like, as a ninth, as a rising ninth grader, you could expect that over four years, you might be able to curate one or more of these experiences. And EF has been our partner so far, that doesn't necessarily mean that they will be the only partner that we work with, but we've enjoyed some real early success in their partnership, and there are a couple of reasons why that we wanted to talk about, that range from having a 24-hour tour facilitator who's on site with you while you're traveling, to different opportunities for both students and educators to earn college or course credit for their experiences. One component of the, the trips that we're grappling with is that they are expensive, and EF provides some great ways to offset some of those costs, but we're having conversations internally about what kinds of fundraising efforts we might galvanize for an entire trip to offset some of the costs, and to help families try to curate these experiences for their kids, and again, my hope is that by being really proactive, and trying to line up a kind of four-year trajectory, a family might be able to say like, this is the thing we're going to try to make happen, and that we can provide some support along the way. So up next, we have an Eastern Europe and World War II trip, being spearheaded by Social Studies Department Chair and parent of a Westwood sophomore, Chris Hilton, that'll be happening over April break, we've got a J-term trip to Costa Rica happening, and a June 2026 trip to Greece, and we hope to be presenting travel proposals to you next month at our next school committee meeting for 2027.
So thank you, I don't know if there are any questions or comments from the committee even.
I know, our kids were on the Dominican trip.
We may have put a couple pictures.
They may have seen one of them. But I will say that Sana thought it was an unbelievable experience, you know, I think it was really good, because it really was a different kind of travel than she had ever done before, and so I think she learned a lot about herself in this travel, but I thought it was, she came back just absolutely, the school was by far the highlight, I think, she loved that.
Yeah, Tim, you know, he had an incredible time, incredible experience, and a highlight of his summer, for sure, and just talked about how meaningful the work was, it wasn't, what I appreciated about the, the, the service that they did, it wasn't just like, I think, like painting a wall, and then the next group comes and they paint that wall again, you know, it's like, it was actual, like, service that was really meaningful, not just in the community, but also for the students themselves, it, it made a difference, working with the, with those kids especially, but then it also felt really good for them, you know, themselves, what they were able to take away from it, so it was, it was really a great opportunity, and I'm glad that we were able to offer that to the students.
Thank you for arranging it, do we still do the Oxford trip, or no?
We didn't have students apply for the program this, this past summer.
Really?
No. And so it, I would say, like, the door is still open, but it, it's, I, I don't know so much about the viability of the program from the host university, and so we'll, we'll advertise it again, and we'll see if we have any takers.
So funny, and is it, is it just for post-grad seniors?
Yes, yeah, you have to be a college student to be able to.
Yeah.
I will say, like, as a principal in Europe, I have never been so proud to represent our school, our students were so responsible, they were, they were on time, they were supportive of one another, they were fun and funny and curious, we, you know, we were sprinting into museums, and they were saying things like, oh, Raphael, he was my favorite painter from the Sistine Chapel, and so for me, it was really great to see the community that we've built in this building, out there in the bigger world, thriving, it was very, very special.
I just want to offer a word of thanks, too, to, to you, Amy and Amber, and our high school educators.
And Kayla.
And Kayla, yeah.
Yeah, feel better, Kayla.
Yeah, please feel better. Who, you know, when we started having these discussions a couple of years ago, there was some hesitation about jumping in, but hearing the stories today, I appreciate you taking the leap along with us in this, and, and Sheila and Liam, I, I, hearing you talk today, and this is, this is why we brought this in, and so, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have unfortunately set lima up, because the next item on the agenda is summer capital projects, which, after we're showing international sites.
Well, I think they're fun. I like my pictures, just. Perfect, all right, thank you, so I do have a lot of pictures to share today, and I'm going to try to fly through, and Tim, try to signal to you when I'm ready for the next one, so it was a very busy summer, it always is, but this one in particular, had a lot going on, so I'm going to start here with storytelling with the Shein School, where one of our summer projects was a replacement of some aging electric panels, so you can see the Federal Pacific Electric Panels at the Shein, those are panels we've discussed before, that company is out of business, and you can no longer buy parts for these panels, and we were concerned about how well they would be, how reliable they would be, they were well past the, you know, useful life, and were told by two different engineering firms that it was time to replace these, so we took that on, the project was certainly expensive, around 500, 530K was what it entailed, and there was a new service line that we needed to install for the building, and the next slide shows where we are today, so we were able to remove the panels from the boiler room, which is not, like, the mechanical room, which was not the right place for them, and now they're in a closet that has fire protection equipment and electrical, but only those two things, so much safer setting for those, and we, we have replaced seven of those panels at this point. The service that we supplied to the building is oversized for what we need, just in case we ever need more, but we didn't, that wasn't done at additional cost, so we were able to get some flexibility for ourselves in case there's ever a future need, but I'd say this was a successful project, and one of the things that helped us achieve it was, we have an in-house electrician on our staff, Ed Cogovan, who's really a star, and he was able to be on site every day that this project was ongoing, so that was helpful. Also at the Shein, we had a UN event that conked out, this is a, a picture of another one, but just to give you an example of the vintage of these things, I mean, they're timepieces, they've got leather tops, they're really beautiful, but they are, you know, gone, and so this is a 1948 UN event, we replaced one like that, and what we have on the right side is the replacement piece in, in the kindergarten classroom, the UN event was replaced because it was just getting too noisy and not heating well, we have others that need replacement as well, but it, this is not an easy project to take on, so we've only picked off this one, because it became enough of a problem, the issue is that replacing them, they're not, buying the new ones requires that you break walls and modify the piping, it's just not the right size. So finally, at the Shein, we also had an opportunity to buy two used hot water boilers, and we learned about these that were available from another, from a commercial building that no longer needed them, we picked them up because it allowed us to take the newer section of the Shein building, which was relying on a heat exchanger that dates to 1968, and that was converting the, the steam coming out of the steam boiler to hot water, so that we can heat that section of the building, but that 1968 heat exchanger could fail at any point, we now are heating that section of the building with these two boilers that are dedicated to that section, we still have the heat exchanger as a backup, in case any of these fail, but I think overall, it's improved the, you know, functionality of that building, and helps us withstand more. and helps us withstand more pressure in case something, um, doesn't work. So that was a cost-effective project also. And a key part of it was implemented by our contracted HVAC, um, company. So, uh, that was a win. At the high school, we've done a lot of work in the kitchen. Um, so this is a tilt skillet, which is, um, something that we use for multiple functions, frying, steaming, but can tilt and allow the staff to, like, prepare a lot of food and then immediately package or store it. Um, so that, the old unit failed and this is the replacement unit that we purchased. And the next slide, I think, is the dishwasher. Yep. Um, and so we also installed the dishwasher at the high school. This is part of our effort to be more sustainable in our practice year. And it has, um, allowed us to reuse cookware and also, um, the stainless, you know, plates that students are now using in the cafeteria. So that project required some, um, trench work in the floor. It was more than we thought. As always with some of these big projects, um, you take on and you discover that it's a little bit more than you urged in the gamble for. But I, this was a win that took us about a year and a half to implement, but finished this summer. Um, we've also, in something that people may see more, we've replaced the high school cafeteria furniture. And there's a photo here of the old furniture, which was fixed in place. So the seats were not movable. They didn't have backs and they were hard. And students have been using this space more and more in between classes, not only during lunchtimes, but also during S block, during other times in between, um, where they might have a free period. So the appeal from that, the, the high school made an appeal to us to consider new furniture that was more soft seating and more flexible seating that would make this a comfortable space to study and work and meet with peers. So, uh, that's what it is and I've, uh, heard the students have loved it. So that was a win this summer. At Thurston, um, we built two breakout spaces in classrooms that are used for special education students. And, um, those were like a last-minute pivot by facilities to, and they made it happen. So I appreciate Tom Carey coming through and taking care of this in August when we were very busy. Um, and the next slide at Thurston, I think, was, um, some cameras that we also installed in that building. Long overdue, but, um, uh, they, they chip away at the fact that we do need more in terms of security at this building and some of our other older buildings. So we'll continue to, to pick off these projects a little bit at a time. Thurston, um, was also a focus of our roof projects this summer. And we did, we redid the modular roof at, uh, the rear modular at Thurston. So the pictures here are of the old roof. And you can see a lot of the white patches that you see on the left side are, are repairs that have been done over the years. Um, this roof failed earlier than where we wanted it to be. And when we did a moisture scan, most, most of the insulation there was wet and no longer really, you know, providing any kind of thermal barrier. So, um, hopefully this will mean energy improvement, but also it means that this is a, um, a modular that will be able to last for at least 10, 15 more years, which is what our hope is. So that's that roof and there's some pictures of the finished product there. It was done in two weeks and it was right on time and on budget. So this was an easy one. Then, um, at MJ, just to transition quickly, they, um, did get a project at MJ and this was the voice-over IP phone conversion. We also picked, took care of the PA system, the bells and the clocks in the same project. So that was implemented in the summer at MJ. And now back to roofs, uh, at the high school. This has been a much bigger project than you know. You've been seeing, everyone who's been to this campus has been seeing some of the work at the high school. We've got some, um, before photos here showing the, um, high school roof as we were, um, taking off the solar panels. And they were originally trying to assess the scale of the work and cleaning off material. Um, and then the next photo shows what we have done so far. So almost all of it is in yellow. There are still things to take care of on the punch list for the high school roof. And there are two sections on the top right of this image, um, over the cafeteria and the loading dock that are not yet, um, recoded. But the majority of the building at this point is done, at least the bulk of the work is done. And we're now into these punch list items and, um, inspections. So we've had, um, you know, part of our goal here is to get a 20-year warranty on the high school roof. And we've had, uh, the, the manufacturer of that product come out to do an inspection. Um, and that's the stage that we're at. So these are some photos of the project as it's come together. Um, that's the coating that has been applied on the roof. And the next slide, Tim, um, shows you also the coating, but as well as a, a photo of a nighttime image where we were doing a thermal scan to confirm that there's no more, um, wet insulation on the high school roof. So we had done the pre-scan to see where the, those areas were. We cut out all the wet insulation and now we've confirmed that it's all gone in the scans that have been done. Um, one discovery at the high school, which did cause this project to come in over budget now, is that the pool roof had a lot of, um, moisture penetration from below. It's actually from the pool itself. The vapor barrier at the pool roof had completely been compromised. So we were getting all of that steam coming up from the pool into the, into the insulation in that roof. Um, and there was no really good way to salvage that roof or to recode it. So we had to just strip it all off. So it's the bottom line for the high school. The, the pool roof became, um, its most significant change order here, which was about 270,000. Um, that, uh, as well as some other costs related to MRSCO's removal of the solar panels, led to this being over budget. Um, so I'd say that the cost of the high school project has now approached 3 million. So that's where we are. We originally budgeted with the town 2.5 million. I've been able to absorb the other costs within our capital budget. So we are fully, like, you know, we've got all our contracts in place and we're moving forward. But just, um, to give you a sense of that reality, it has cannibalized what we can do with other roof projects and we'll just have to build up our roofing reserve again. So that's the high school. And related to this, we've also had, um, other concurrent projects on our campus here. The, there's an EV charger project that is in progress. And the trenching that you see on the left there was for that, that EV charger. But the charger here is not our charger yet. That's from Pine Hill. We will see one like this installed at the high school in the coming weeks.
Where's it gonna go?
Um, in this, in the faculty lot. Yep. Um, but the trenching, we were able to coordinate between MRSCO putting up the, um, solar canopy and the trenching work that was gonna be done here for the EV chargers. And we were able to put the conduit and the lines in the same trenches. So that was a win, just in terms of scheduling all that work together. So that's the progress photo there. And then these are some images of the solar canopy that went up as well this summer. There's a lot of work here in the parking lot as they were, um, preparing for that. It was difficult to execute this, as you may imagine, um, on schedule. And we were very nervous about the, like, hitting that, um, opening school day and having the parking lot available. Um, I would say there was a compromise that we had, we have to live with as a result of making it on schedule. So the, the canopies were erected, but you can see in that final photo, like, we do have some funky drainage at the posts. Um, and the way that that's built is partly a result of the schedule and the engineering that they had to do. So they just, like, poured and established the, the structure before they really knew where all the drains were gonna go. Um, so not thrilled about it, but we're working around it and there's gonna be protection around those columns. So that's now the final detail that we're working on with MRSCO. Um, there was also a change in the OSO remedy to the, um, bike pad that's part of this project. There was something about the pour that didn't work out right. So we are negotiating with them to determine what that remedy will be. So those are the two unfinished pieces. They do have to complete the wiring for this. And we anticipate that, um, I think within 10 days is when they will be done with most of the laying of conduit and the wiring. Um, and then they'll be able to pro, give back all the parking spots that they've tentatively held back from students. So there are about 20 spots that they haven't allowed any students to use because of safety reasons as all the work is completed. Um, so that should be done within about 10 days. Um, and then interconnection, like, the actual going live, at least for the, te, testing the system, will happen November 10th. Um, that's a Monday, that, it'll happen in the evening. It's a school day and then the day after is a holiday. So we've timed it that night so that we can shut down the building, connect the canopy, connect the EV chargers, and then have a day for a grace period to make sure that everything is back up and running for the next day of school. Um, there's a, there's a lot that then has to happen for commissioning and, and, and remaining pieces before we can benefit financially from the installation of the solar canopy. But I would say, given where we were in the summertime, I'm pleased that we are where we are, especially with this. I was worried that we wouldn't be able to let students use the parking lot, but that, that did happen. Um, I have been talking to Tom Philbin about a new, um, you know, new contract for our electricity supply. Um, we are going, our contract currently, we have, we benefit from a fixed-price contract for electricity for our schools. And that expires, I believe, December 2026. So we've been talking about entering into a new contract soon. Prices are going up and it's gonna be a significant hit to the operating budget. So it is helpful that this is coming online as we are negotiating and thinking about that impact because it will relieve some of this. So I'll be watching for that as it comes through. And I think that might be my last one on this, on the summer capital projects. But I want to give a shout out to the folks who've been, like, managing all of this work. Um, certainly Tom Carey, who, you know, has been a big help just like juggling the big projects as well as taking care of the launching of the school year, right? The ordinary stuff. Um, Ron Smith, who's working under him. I mentioned Ed Cogovan, our, our electrician, who took care of the Sheen project. And on the high school roof and the high school canopy, Skanska has been our OPM and they've done a really nice job of, um, staying on top of the schedule. They assigned, um, our, our onsite rep, our field rep for the project, um, Jerry Albert, has been here nights, weekends, early mornings. And he's done everything that it took to be there and to observe what was happening and reported back when things were not being done right, which is what we need. Um, so he's really been our advocate. Um, and I've appreciated that as well. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you to you too, Lema. Like, don't, don't undersell your own involvement in these projects as well. Yeah, the last thing I want to say related is, and thank you to Dory for the graphic. Um, you know, we do have our, our, uh, public forums coming up about our facility study. But I mention this here only with the reminder that, like, just because we are talking about long-range options for our schools doesn't mean we're not doing the work we need to do now to make sure that our schools continue to be safe and operational for students and staff. You saw the amount of work that we did at Sheen, the amount of work we did at Thurston. Um, so that work continues because we have a whole, regardless of what happens with the long-range future, we have a whole generation of students going through those buildings in the interim. So, um, we want to continue to do that. But thank you again to Lema, to Tom, uh, to Ron, to our, to Ed, uh, and to our staff for doing these. So I don't know if there's any questions from the committee on the summer capital work.
I don't have a question, but I know that, Lema, you've had multiple conversations with the students from the Legislative Council about sustainability at the high school. And one of their sort of questions they kept asking was about dishwashers. And I, I don't know if that was related, but I am excited to be able to go back and tell the group. Or maybe we will, like, that it's the hair, it's there. Um, as well as, I know there was a lot of conversation with the group from last year about finding those comfortable cozy spots for them to sit. Um, and so it's exciting to kind of see it here, like, not that long after they started talking about it.
No, I'm, I'm thrilled with the way that the cafeteria, um, seating space looks. And I know Amy would like to see even more of that furniture in other places in the building. Um, and we have other schools, you know. And we have other schools. Yeah, but I, I think it's a win.
Are we doing anything press, anything or event, are we, when this goes live, the solar panel?
The solar, the solar canopies.
We gotta get, we've been fighting over this for 10 years.
We have like a block party.
I don't know.
Yeah, no, it's, it's actually on the radar. We, we have a, a conversation with, uh, with our folks later this week. Um, and so we can talk about a, a rollout strategy with them, particularly for when it goes live. So, yeah, we, we definitely want to get some, uh, seeing of that project through a long journey to completion. Um, we should get some positive press about that.
It worked out great for Westwood Day.
It did, yeah.
I was very happy with it on Westwood Day. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Lema.
Uh, we'll stay with Lema, just, um, this is just verbal on the Q1 financial report.
Not as many photos. Um, so for the first quarter financial report, I've presented you with a memo. So the, the story here is that, uh, at the end of the first quarter, I can see that this operating budget is gonna be more challenging than last year's. And there are two key pieces to the story. The most important is staff turnover and the churn that we're seeing in staff. In particular, um, in support positions, so instructional aides, ABAs, those two roles, which are really critical for our schools. Um, we, we have seen turnover ever since the pandemic, but it continues. And it's impacting this year's operating budget in particular. So we started the year with some vacancies in these roles. There were like five to seven vacancies in IA positions in August. Um, but then we were, um, we, we experienced the resignation of an additional 11 ABAs um, right before the start of the school year. And that is just not a viable, like, thing to, to, you know, recover from at that point in the year. Um, so it put us in a very difficult spot. There, um, the best way to handle it was to pivot and to hire contracted service providers. Um, but as I look at the operating budget, where I see the impacts here are in the salary lines. We do have vacancies. So even now, there are 20 vacancies between instructional aides and ABAs um, in the district. And for context, we have about 80 positions for instructional aides and we have 35 ABAs. So 20 total vacancies between those two pools. And, um, so that's seen in some available money on the salary lines, but not as much as you would imagine because we don't encumber in advance for the year and on the salary line. So we've only had two paychecks at the time of this report and about $90,000 in savings that hadn't hit there. I do anticipate that more, you'll start to see that more and more as the year goes on. And in particular, also the town will start to see some savings because they budget about 30% of a position's salary for benefits. And so that, that, the savings for the benefit side is seen at the town. The savings on the salary side will be seen in our operating budget as the year progresses. In professional positions, there was also a lot of churn in special ed roles in particular, related services like speech pathologists, those positions are sometimes hard to fill. So, and, you know, directors, speech pathologists, BCBA's, we've seen that we've hired sometimes not, at a salary that was equal to or higher than the person who departed. So, um, it wasn't a net savings. And then there were other one-time costs, like leaves of absence, separation costs, um, or coaching or other transition costs. So that's what we saw in professional expenses, professional salaries. Um, meanwhile, the non-salary accounts, what I observed there is just the cost of those contracted service providers. They are putting the special education contract service line over budget by 1.08 million. And I expect it to be about 1.5 million by the end of the year because there are gonna be other services we're going to need that we don't know about yet for special education. And usually the expense there grows during the year. So that is significant, but again, you, you will anticipate their savings on the other side in the salary piece. And finally, the other, um, area where we have, um, expenses that exceed budget is in tuitions. We have had tuitions and placements that have changed versus where we were when we budgeted for this school year. And there are about five that have shifted and this puts us over budget by about 140,000. At the end of the year, so I, I do think we're gonna be able to close this year. I am not concerned about that yet because I believe the mechanism for closing the year will be transfers. So, or, you know, some, some of this, um, even if I don't physically transfer the funds, at the end of the year, we close on a bottom-line budget for the schools. So if I have available funds in, um, salary lines, it will offset a deficit in non-salary lines for special education. We will be in, you know, in conversation with the town around any other pressures related to that. But I also anticipate that we might have to use the special education reserve to address the, um, tuitions that are unanticipated. In just a couple of weeks, like, next week, I start to plan for the FY '27 budget. And the pressures that I see now in this budget inform that because of two things. We are entering into bargaining with IAs and ABAs. And so as we look at how difficult it is to fill these positions, we have to think about, um, what we can and cannot do in the, that bargaining process. And, um, we also have to budget for any known tuition. So once a tuition is known, um, it is our obligation to budget for it within the operating budget and we cannot rely on our reserve. Um, so while these two, the tuitions that have shifted were a surprise, um, we'll need to incorporate them into the next operating budget.
That's a good question. So help me, okay, so I, we're 20, I understand we're short on the salaries so we're spending on the contracted. What's the delta? In other words, is it, is there a markup? In other words, you know what I'm saying? We still have, need the people. I get it.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's tough for us to quantify that right now. Because the, we are over on the contracted side. There are two pockets of savings. One pocket of savings is on, in our operating budget on the salary side. Um, just from an accounting perspective, because we don't encumber salaries for the year in advance, like, we can calculate that out, but, but we're, you know, we at least have control over that, that, those calculations. The tougher part is that, not in our budget, but in the shared cost budget for the town, we're saving on the benefit side.
Yeah.
Um, we don't have as much transparency into that. I've already had some initial conversations, or we've had some initial conversations with Town Hall about that. We don't have as much transparency into that. I've already had some initial conversation, or we've had some initial conversations with Town Hall about that. You know, this, this may be a conversation we need to have about, have about the mechanism for which we can be made whole for savings that we're not realizing on our end. Um, whether that's something that happens at town meeting, I, you know, I, I don't want to presuppose, but, you know, I'm trying to lay some foundation for that, that if there needs to be a transfer from available funds. If there's a, if there's an underspending in shared costs related to insurance, for example, the reason there's an underspending is because of a, because of our increase in contracted services, right? So, um, so we don't have those numbers quantified yet. But we, we're starting to have those conversations with Town Hall.
I mean, the right, in an ideal world, we want, I mean, not just from financial, from educational, we'd want not to have, yeah, okay.
In an ideal world, we do want our employees. Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, for other reasons.
The quality and the consistency for students is always better. I, I do, so I budget about thirty-five thousand for an IA and about forty-five for an ABA to, on average. And so, but the contracted providers are coming in fifty-five, sixty-five sometimes. So, but that includes a benefit cost. So, and what benefits are varies for the town, like the real expense depends on whether they actually take healthcare or not from us. And, um, so it's a little bit hard to really say. But I would, uh, on the whole, we can, um, absorb this pressure. It's just not great instructionally. So in the long term, we need to solve the problem. Um, but this year the transfer will allow us to get through it.
I think it, I just want to note that these eleven resignations is an aberration and not something. It was a unique set of circumstances that led to that. Um, and I just want to iterate that this is not something we expect to occur again. Correct?
I, I think that's fair.
Yeah, that is very fair. Yeah.
So, um, I also want to say that I think this is a good discussion because we are going into budget talks. Everybody in town is very aware of the taxes and I think we just need to be very mindful when we go into these talks that, you know, we might have to make some very hard decisions this year. I think we've been lucky. Over the past few years, we, we, you know, we've sort of been able to rescue ourselves at the last minute from some of that stuff. But this year, um, I just anticipate a tough budget year. So I just want to preview that a little bit. So, okay.
Thanks. Um, finally, the very last thing under superintendent's report, and I'm, um, not even going to go really into it, but you can see there's an item linked to your agenda. It's a quarterly update from Tech, um, the Education Cooperative. Um, I know I'd flag this for the committee. This needs to be on the agenda on a quarterly basis just to comply with, um, state regulations. If you have any questions about the report, I'm happy to answer them. If not, then we will move on to the next thing.
Any question? Okay.
All right.
Um, all right. Thank you very much for that superintendent's report.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, this is very robust and we still have the MCAS report to get to as well, but yeah.
Um, all right, moving to the school committee chair updates and liaison reports. So for the chair's update, I have a few things. The first, I wanted to talk about office hours. We're going to be hosting our first session on Monday, October twentieth. That's a week from yesterday, um, at six thirty PM in the professional development room. Uh, I think the district circulated a sign-up sheet. You know, we just ask people if they have a minute to register, thinking of coming to register ahead of time just so we know what kind of topics to be discussed so we can be better prepared. I think we're going to send another email reminder out this week. Um, so if you missed it, you should see that again. And this, again, it's a reminder, it's just sort of a roundtable discussion with two members of school committee. Uh, the superintendent is usually assistant superintendent as well, um, just to really be able to have a back and forth dialogue with community members that we can't have in these meetings. So I think this Monday it will be Tony and I attending, right? And then the next one after that, I don't know exactly the date, it'll be in the morning. We'll sort of switch on and off. Second, Tim had the slide up, community forums. The first one is this Friday, October seventeenth at nine thirty AM at the Westwood Public Library. The, these are, this is really, uh, to present the facility study that was presented to us in April. And also to open it up to Q and A from the, uh, community. So we're really encouraging everyone to attend one of these sessions. The presentation in all three will be pretty much the same. There's nothing substantively new in each of them. Discussions might be different depending on, you know, what questions are asked, but, um, the presentations are the same. We want everyone to give everyone an opportunity to attend. So we have one in the morning. The next one is virtual and the one after that is in the evening, trying to hit everyone's schedule. So we encourage everyone to attend. We are posting these as school committee meetings because, um, we may have a quorum of school committee members there. So we want to make sure that it's posted properly as a meeting. Um, but the only item on the agenda will be the, the presentation and then of course the question and answer session. We've also gone to, I think almost all PTOs at this point.
Uh, we have MJ and the preschool left.
Yep, so two left. Um, we've had all the pre, almost all of the PTOs, uh, again, speaking about this and trying to get feedback from the community. Um, we've had some great conversations at these PTO meetings. I think we've all experienced some of them. And I just want to thank all of the PTOs for their partnership and for allowing us to come and take up a chunk of their valuable time. And finally, hopefully for the last time, I will talk about the Pine Hill School. I know everybody is really sick of this building project. But, um, the planning board closed out the permit on September thirtieth. So I thought this would be a great time to sort of say, you know, a final overview of the project, including some highlights and a final budget update on the project. So the highlights include, um, so I sort of laid this out as what our objective was, what the original goal was and what we actually achieved. So MSBA funding, originally we were expecting about eighteen point two million. Um, thankfully, the, um, the MSBA recognized the tough times we were in coming out of COVID and all of the construction increased costs. So we ended up with a, with a final grant of about twenty-one point four million dollars, which was a big win for us. And I'll talk about that in the next slide. For sustainability, we were going for LEED certified. Uh, initially, we actually got LEED gold. So that was a huge win. Um, that was a really exciting sustainability goal. For energy use intensity, just a reminder, this is a measurement of how efficient, energy efficient your building is. The lower the number, the better. So we were going for twenty-five EUI. We are actually operating right now at twenty-three point one EUI. So again, a win there. And finally, the solar panels. We went into this project with the idea that the building would be solar panel ready, but not necessarily have the panels. Um, through some very strategic funding, um, that the town was able to procure outside of the building project cost, we were able to actually purchase the panels. And now, um, they are up running and provide about seventy-five percent of the building usage. So again, a great win for the project. And finally, I would like to point out that we were on schedule. It was a little rough going at the very end with an uncooperative HVAC system. But, uh, we were, we did open, um, the weekend after February break. And so that was great news. Um, project costs. So at twenty twenty-one, at town meeting, we told everyone it would, the whole project would cost about eighty-seven point eight million dollars. Unless the grant, the towns would have to borrow sixty-nine point five million. At the end of the day, the total project was ninety-one point seven and the town only had to borrow sixty point three million. The reasons for that are up here. So as I said, the MSBA reimbursement was increased for us. When it was pretty dire and we weren't sure if the project would go through, the school committee voted to, um, use the mitigation funds we had received way, way back in, um, twenty fifteen for university stations. So we put in about two million there. We received ARPA funding. ARPA was the American Rescue Plan Act. This was the federal government's response to COVID. So these were twenty twenty-one funds that we got, about two point one million. IRA funds, this is the Inflation Reduction Act. This was a twenty twenty-two federal program. We have received about five million in IRA funds and we still expect about five hundred thousand more. And finally, we got an ever-source incentive of about two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So all in, we came in on time and under budget. And that is how I'm going to end. Okay, other liaison reports.
Can I just add?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Great job on that. Um, I think also maybe just briefly a bit of an enrollment update.
Yes.
Cause there's a lot of, um, don't trust everything you read in, uh, Facebook. Um, so I think just a couple of things, I've heard a lot of chatter around the community around this building being only half full. My understanding of there's twenty-five classrooms we build in each one of those twenty-five classrooms is being used. Is that correct, Superintendent?
That's correct, yes. We're using twenty-four of those classrooms for Pine Hill students and we're using the twenty-fifth classroom, uh, for our preschool Wawa program currently.
So I'm not, I wasn't a math expert, you, but that's a hundred percent?
That's a hundred percent.
Okay, and I'll do the math on the next one. My understanding, there's four hundred eighty-eight students and our target capacity was five hundred and sixty. And if I can do some math, I think that's eighty-seven percent. So it's fair to say the building is fairly well full. Is that fair?
Definitely more than fifty.
Yes, definitely more than fifty. So I think both of these things actually are pretty important that we, maybe find a way to get both of these out in the community. I mean, I think this as well, because at town meet, the meeting last week, the fire station people was throwing around ninety million, which is what we like, almost voted, but the net effect of sixty million, I think we should get this out in the, uh, the community, so.
Yeah, no, and that's the enrollments. Uh, in fact, I think we're actually higher now than we thought we were going to be at this time. So, um, I think it's, we're definitely not half full.
So no, we, glad we didn't.
I think Reed will vouch for the fact that we are not half full.
Glad we didn't take the advice of some of those people who spoke on the football field four years ago. Anyway.
Harboring grudges, Tony?
He's just so cold.
It was cold.
All right. So any questions on Pine Hill? All right.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, any other liaison reports? Okay.
Well, I have, we're going to come forward with a new wellness policy. The Wellness, um, Committee met. And we've been working through new policies. So that will be forthcoming in the next few months. And we can talk more about that. And then the other thing I'll mention is the Metro West, what's it officially called?
Adolescent Health Survey.
Yes, it's being launched this year. We got grant funding. Um, we did it two years ago in two thousand twenty-three. Um, we're going to do it again in, uh, next month at the, that's at the middle school and then the high school. I think the one thing we want to talk about is, is, uh, the committee is actually, what a lot of other districts do is actually share some of that amount of that in the school committee forum. Cause it's actually really helpful data for parents to see and the community to see. We don't need to figure out that now, but I think that's, I think a good practice, um, that we'll want to think about. We didn't do it two years ago in two thousand twenty-three, but I think there is some value in sharing some of that data, um, at aggregate level, um, to the community. So more to come on that.
Great. Excellent. Thank you. Any other liaison reports? Okay, um, moving to public participation. This is an opportunity for the public to come and speak to the school committee. Um, we ask that you give your name, your address and limit your remarks to three minutes. Is there anyone who would wish us to speak?
Hi, Eileen Segal, two fifty-seven Alder Road. Um, and that night was so cold. It was like my first school committee meeting ever and I was freezing. Um, so I just was listening to the presentations and um, there seems to be a lot of turnover in the special education department, especially in the last couple of years. And that really worries me. Um, again, all of you know this, but I am a special education teacher. Um, and because of this, I also know when a district takes care of you, you call it home. And that is one of the main reasons I, I am very worried about all this turnover. And I, I do understand that the ABAs is an anomaly and we did have people retire. But that wasn't the only turnover we have had, um, in different positions. Currently at the preschool, we still don't have a program director. I will say that these preschool teachers are phenomenal. Their service providers are phenomenal, genie. Everybody should send her flowers. She's amazing and Lori's been doing a great job. But it, it's still felt. Um, I really hope that there is some digging in being done. Um, Caitlin, one of the things I loved about you coming on board is being able to offer that extra insight to how teachers and staff are feeling and, and what's going on and being able to dig in a bit to see what staff and teachers need. So I'm really encouraging leadership to please dig in a bit. Please find out what's going on in the culture, maybe. Um, and again, I do understand that August, that was extremely rare. And I'm not saying that, but I'm saying I, I really hope you start asking some questions. Um, we are so fortunate that Lori landed in our lap. And I just really hope that support is given and some questions are asked and surveys are done and just please dig in a bit so we can make sure that as wonderful as private contractors are, they're, they're not Westwood. And you can do a job well, but it's not the same as loving a child and being part of the community you work in. So that's all.
Thank you. Um, anyone else for public participation? Okay, moving on, I was closing public participation. Uh, moving on to discussion items. First up is the MCAS report.
Sure. So I'm, I'm going to kick off and I'm going to turn it over to Caitlin in a second. Just to provide some context around the report this evening. The, this is a very high level, uh, analysis of the MCAS data from two thousand twenty-five. Just for some context around that, the state was delayed in releasing the data this year. It only came out two weeks ago. So we've really only been able to look at this at a district level at this point. Um, I also want to, you know, mention that, you know, Caitlin will talk about this at the end of the presentation. You know, this is one data point that we use along with other data points to figure out how we, we make adjustments to our practice. Um, or can, or continue to lean into the things that are going well, right? So that's, uh, that's part of the work that we're doing. The next phase of this is, is we're going to be digging into, into school level data in a greater degree. I know I'll share those results with the committee uh, independently of this, this evening. Uh, but just wanted to provide some initial context around where we are in this process right now. Given just the time gap that has happened, including having a couple of holidays in the interim. So we haven't been able to fully convene everybody around this, but just wanted to provide that upfront. So with that being said, Caitlin, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Hi, and, um, the one thing that you didn't ask that I'll, oh, I hope my voice holds out for this. That we, we want to know about questions. Should we do questions?
Oh, yeah, thank you. Yeah, we're going to do this. We're going to talk about, um, ELA, then math and science, and then look at some disaggregated data. We can either, and I'll defer to you, May, whether or not we stop and do questions along the way with each section, or we want to get through the whole presentation and then do questions at the end.
I think it makes sense to stop like after each section and do questions. It's more relevant.
Okay, perfect.
All right. So as Tim said, this is a, a high level overview. Um, we, sorry.
I can take over for you if you need it, so.
No, it'll be good if you don't mind my scratchiness. Um, we are pleased and proud to say that in Westwood, we do have really strong outcomes on MCAS. We do see that year over year and this year is no different. So we have an overall high performance. And the percentages of our students meeting and exceeding expectations have increased in most content areas at most grades, um, which is really great to see. Additionally, we are always looking at our student growth percentiles, um, and those remain very strong. We also look at our performance in comparison to our, like in nearby districts, which we'll be sharing a couple of different, um, ways of looking at the data tonight. And that is one of them that we'll show. A key finding is also, this is the first year that the civics assessment has been given. Last year it was in field test. It, it was done as a field test. This year we, we, it was in full implementation. And that's an area that we need to examine more closely. We'll look at that when we get to those charts a little bit later in the presentation. And then finally, we do have a close eye on our achievement gaps and looking at all of our students. We have very high performance in the aggregate. And then when we dig down, we do see that across, um, some of our subgroups that we have persistent achievement gaps that we want to make sure that we are working to narrow as we go forward. So similar to last year's report, if you remember a year ago today, we, there will be a couple of different charts in the presentation tonight. One is that we look at Westwood achievement over time, looking at our performance from the last several years. And when you look at it that way, you're really looking for trend lines. Um, in any given year, performance may go up or down a couple of points, not necessarily statistically significant. But do we see a general positive trend or when we start to see year over year, some negative trends? That's when that gets really significant for us to take a closer look at. We also have, um, the bubble charts. If you recall, you'll see several of them in the, um, presentation. We're looking at the student growth data paired with, um, our scaled scores. So when we see one of those graphs for the first time, I'll, I'll talk a little bit more about what, what that data means. And then we have our comparisons to like in nearby districts. You'll see all of those tonight.
Yeah, I'll just interject with one thing here. I'll give you a chance to recover for a second. So when we think about achievement data, that's really the longitudinal achievement data. That is how did grade five, grade, let's, I'm just going to say grade five. How did grade five in two thousand twenty-five compare to grade five in two thousand twenty-four compared to grade five in two thousand twenty-three? When we talk about student growth data, that's really looking at an individual cohort of students and how have they progressed? How did students in grade five do in two thousand twenty-five relative to their performance in grade four in two thousand twenty-four and grade three in two thousand twenty-three, right? So that's why both of those metrics are important to look at.
Thank you. And then, uh,
Which is, I think, what I just said. So sorry about that.
Yeah, no, that's great. Um, the only other thing that I'll add is that, that first bullet point, a lot of the, um, data that we look at, we present to you in terms of the percentage of students meeting and exceeding expectations. The scaled scores on the MCAS have been divided into those four categories of exceeding, meeting, partially meeting or not meeting. Um, and so we pulled together the meeting and exceeding percentages, um, to share in a lot of these. And so we pulled together the meeting and exceeding percentages to share in a lot of these charts and graphs.
Just to, these are the districts that we do the same process we've done in previous years. Our tech districts, those are the districts in our educational collaborative. I do want to flag that there, actually, this is an old, there should be two additional things on this chart. I think we pulled an old chart here. On the tech side, King Philip and Sharon. Sharon is already on our high-performing district list, but King Philip and Sharon recently joined tech over the last year, so they're added to that list. Our high-performing districts in the middle, that has remained the same. The DART districts change annually. That's the tool that DESI uses to identify demographically comparable districts. Comparing those, that chart to two thousand twenty-four, the districts that have been added are Dyton, Rehoboth, Duxbury, Wayland, and, Dyton, Rehoboth, Duxbury, and Wayland, the districts that came off, were Marblehead, Maskanonah, and Penn Tucket. So, just for whatever it's worth.
So we'll dig into the ELA data. We'll look at it grades three through ten, and then we can pause for questions at that point or anytime in between. Overall, in ELA, we are happy to share that we see continued high performance across all of our grade levels. In every grade level, we, in the percentages of students meeting or exceeding, we held steady or showed a little bit of improvement. You're fine. Our elementary schools in particular, you'll see when we get to the bubble charts, have very high growth, student growth percentiles, which is great to see. In grade eight, we had an improvement in students meeting and exceeding from last year. We had sixty-nine percent meeting and exceeding last year. This year, we see that at seventy-five percent. And the grade ten achievement continues to be very strong, at seventy-seven percent of our students meeting and exceeding. So here's the longitudinal data. You'll see the top three lines are specific to Westwood. Those are our grades three, four, and five over the last four years. The blue rows, or blue lines in the middle, that's the comparison to the state performance. So as, is not a surprise, we are well outperforming the state across grades three through five. And what we like to see is each of our grades three through five showed a slight increase this year in our ELA scores. The longitudinal data here is for grades six through eight and ten. What I wanted to point out here is that grade eight gain that I mentioned a minute ago, and also grade ten, so I'm gonna actually have to.
Yeah, so, so grade ten, and not just grade ten, but high school science, it's kind of, it's kind of a.
Thanks for ELA.
No, I'm gonna talk about grade ten, ELA, math, and high school science, because high school science is generally given in grade nine. All of them are impacted by the passage of question two. And so the fact that MCAS is no longer a graduation requirement statewide, you'll see some greater variability in performance. You can see a large dip. That's that darker blue line that went down substantially in ELA. But we maintain steady, steady results here in Westwood. But I just want to acknowledge that grade ten is mitigated by the passage of question two, just for context.
Meaning that because it's no longer a graduation requirement, kids are blowing it off?
Yeah, I know one of the things that was, in some corners, right? So I know one of the things that was shared on a call with superintendents from DESI was particularly looking at grade ten essay results and the number of essays that were scored either at zero or off-topic because kids in grade ten just chose not to invest time in the essay on the MCAS. So, from a statewide perspective.
Yeah, so, oh, actually, can you go back to that quickly? So, yeah, that's that purple line in the middle. We see the state trend line for grade ten starting to drop there. Our, as Tim said, our, our grade ten has held steady, which is wonderful, and I think we do have questions going forward around how reliable MCAS will be as a data point to understand how our students are doing if that dip ends up being realized here in Westwood as well.
In tenth grade, you mean?
In tenth grade, yes, as a graduation. So for grade three here, we just have the comparison to our like districts because there is no student growth percentile in grade three. It's the first time they've taken the test, so we don't have anywhere to grow from. And then here we see the bubble chart that I was referring to. So on the horizontal axis, you have the scaled score of the MCAS assessment, the average scaled score. And then on the vertical axis, we have our student growth percentiles between forty to sixty percent, and that student growth percentile is average growth. Forty to fifty, they consider that low average, fifty to sixty, high average, and then anything above sixty is above typical growth.
And these towns are all of the DART, the tech, and the.
Yeah, all of those districts listed in a few slides. Every single one of those is there, as well as we put where the state average is as well.
Okay.
So I think as we go, I will try not to narrate every chart on every slide, but we'll let you take a look, and then if there are questions, I'm happy to respond to them.
Yeah, I would just say generally with the bubble chart, right, is you want to be up in that upper right-hand quadrant, because that's high achievement, high growth, so.
No, I don't think so. I think we're just. So that was a quick run-through. I don't know if we want to go back to any particular.
Anyone? Moving on to math? Okay.
All right. Actually, a quick question, and maybe Mr. Redmond. Is there any hypothesis on eighth grade? Was it, I don't want to say, was it, yeah, any hypothesis on the eighth grade jump?
On the improvement?
Yeah.
That's a great question. I feel like we are just starting to dig in. The released items just became available, so we were able to see, you know, what standards our students did really well on. But we weren't yet able to spend time looking at what actual test questions looked like. Yeah, more to come for sure. So in math, we continue our steady, strong performance. You will see, steady, I think, is the operative word here. There's not a ton of change between last year's scores and this year's scores. I want to just shout out our grades four and five. They had very strong percentages of students meeting and exceeding the expectations at seventy-five percent and seventy-seven percent. In seventh grade, you'll see when we get to the slide, there was a slight decline from seventy-two percent meeting and exceeding last year to sixty-six percent this year. The thing that's interesting about that, that we're looking in, looking at closely, is that it's paired with a strong student growth percentile. So the students in the cohort showed above-average growth in that time. The score is still coming in lower than last year's cohort. So certainly something that we're looking at.
So would that mean that grade six?
Yes.
What, last year?
Last year, grade six.
Would have been?
Lower than sixty-six?
Lower?
Um, yes-ish, no-ish.
Yeah.
I mean, essentially, what it means is that our students in grade seven, last year's, two thousand twenty-five grade seven test takers.
Right.
Right. Had a strong MCAS performance relative to their historic grade six and grade five scores. SGP is based upon a weighted, I think it's a two-thirds, one-third weighted average of the, of the previous year and the two years before that. And so when you see a dip in achievement but a high growth percentile, that generally indicates something that may be related to a cohort of students in particular, and it's relative to their previous performance, they did better. But if you'd only look at achievement, it appears that it was worse than previous years, right? And that's why it's important we look at both axes in the context here. The lower achievement means that there is still work to do, but relative to where students were, it means that we've made good growth with the students that were in front of us.
I guess I'm trying to understand this because I don't understand it. So twenty twenty-five, grade seven. There was a decline from the grade prior to them, but, so that must have meant twenty twenty-four, grade six, did worse because otherwise you wouldn't have had a strong SGP, correct?
Yeah, I'm trying to pull up just last year's reports.
Is that what that means?
Yeah, essentially, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so when I look at last year's twenty twenty-four, grade six, sorry, I'm trying to do this quickly on the fly here.
And you, I mean, if this is a pain to dig this out, we don't have to get this granular, but I'm just trying to wrap my head around that data point.
Sorry, I'm trying to do this on the fly, so my apologies for. Actually, I'm gonna jump ahead for one second because I wanted to look at. Yeah, because I'm looking at the statewide data as well, too. Statewide data shows that, that grade seven was flat, so it's not, because sometimes that's related to a statewide, trying to particular grade level, the state level may have been different.
Yeah.
When I look at the grade six data.
Twenty-four?
Getting all to the classic. Yeah, I mean, the, the grade seven math scaled score is actually, it looks like slightly above, within a point or two of the grade six scaled score. So while there is a, you can see here at the state level, the grade seven data is below grade six, showing a general decline in achievement from grade six to grade seven. Our students stayed the same or actually got stronger for grade seven in two thousand twenty-five compared to grade six in two thousand twenty-four. And so that's why you would see a higher SGP, even so lower achievement relative to grade seven in two thousand twenty-four. This is like really inside data baseball stuff.
Yeah.
But I think your hypothesis is generally correct, but I'd need to dig in a little bit more specifically.
And I don't want to take up our time, so that's fine.
Just to finish up this, this point, and then we can continue the conversation in a few more slides. But we see a tenth grade gain this year. When we get to the longitudinal data, you'll see that we had a dip last year, and, and this year really looks like a rebound to the prior trend line for grade ten in math. So this is grades three through five. Again, it's that steady, not much change from prior years comparison to the state. We are still well, well surpassing the state. And then here, I think, May, I don't know if this, this helps at all, but when I look at this and I see the grade six line from two thousand twenty-four, we see that was a dip last year for grade six, twenty-four. And now in grade seven, we see a dip from the prior years. So I think that might get at what you're noticing.
That was a much better way of doing it than I did, so thank you.
And then we see that, the golden line for, for grade ten. Last year, we were sitting at the table, sharing with you, you know, this is something we're gonna dig into. This is a, this is an outlier performance with last year. And this year, we see that rebound in grade ten. And again, with that state grade ten line, you see a sort of slow and steady decline. Here we are with the grade level comparisons. And then we move into sharing with the, the bubble chart. So I know that these get really hard to read, and you're gonna need some time with, like, a big monitor to parse it out. But again, we're looking at where, we want to be in that upper right-hand quadrant to show strong growth, strong performance. So and this is that grade seven dip that we've been talking about. The other thing that I think about when I look at our middle school grades is that last year was our first year of full implementation for mid-school math. And so we, we received a grant from the state for professional learning. They came and they helped us with a needs assessment. They visited classrooms several times last year. And one of the findings that they reported back to us was, we need to make sure that you're doing professional learning around how do each of these program components work together and how, what's the research base behind it to really make sure our teachers understand why mid-school math, why these different components of each lesson. So that was the professional development that we engaged in over the course of last year, and it was still new for folks. So there's still definitely work to do on making sure that we are implementing mid-school math with fidelity going forward. Any questions about math? Ready to move into science? All right. So science, just a little background. It's administered in grade five, grade eight, and then at the high school level, schools can choose ninth or tenth grade. So it's reported out as tenth grade, but.
It's really grade nine here.
Yeah. We have continued high achievement. We have gains at each level assessed this year, and you'll see with declines at the state level. So we're happy to see that we've bucked the state trend and have been able to steadily improve our science performance. So here we are in that grade five percentage of meeting and exceeding expectations. That's at eighty percent, which is phenomenal, very strong. And our, you know, grade ten and grade eight are not far below that. Here we are with grade five in comparison to, like.
Of course, Reading always is high in the science. I don't know what they do there, but, I mean, we're great. I mean, I like to learn, but I don't know what they do there.
By the way, I will mention, there is no growth data for science.
Yeah.
Any questions about science before we move into civics?
Yeah, so I'm just gonna, I know I'd, I'd shared some of this with the committee ahead of time. I'm gonna, just before we get into the civics church, want to share a little context around this. The grade eight civics test last year, it's the first time it has been administered at scale with reported data. You can see the actual spread of performance is kind of all over the place. It's a much wider spread in, in district outcomes related to civics. And I know I'd shared an article from the Boston Globe about a week ago that talked about the challenges with a brand-new test and a static test and a constantly evolving civics landscape and some of the juxtaposition between, you know, preparing for an MCAS versus giving kids authentic, real civics experiences with hands-on projects. And so, like, we're gonna use this to dig into some of the results, but within your full transparency, we wanted to share the civics data this evening as well.
So again, there's no longitudinal data because we didn't, they didn't release data for us after last year's field test. But we were able to look at our percentage of meeting and exceeding compared to the state. And what you'll notice right away is that we had fifty-eight percent of students meeting or exceeding expectations. We certainly surpassed the state. And when you think about what we normally see around math and science and literacy, this percentage is lower than what we're used to seeing. And so then when we put it in comparison with our communities, we see that we have to dig in here a little bit. And so that is the work that is ahead of us. We, our humanities department head at Thurston and I have been talking about this and trying to figure out was there something about the timing of the test? This is the fourth MCAS that eighth graders take, and they took it in June. Is that, does that help explain some of this? What we're really looking into, though, is we know that our curriculum is tightly aligned to the standards. We use the DESI Investigating History curriculum to teach the civics curriculum. So we know the curriculum's tightly aligned. We really want to dig into the test questions and see if there was sort of a mismatch in content that we over or underemphasized and what showed up on the test that might help us understand our performance. And, yeah, I look forward to those conversations involving our, our civics teachers and the social studies department as well. Any questions about that before we move on?
I, you said, you mentioned the timing of the test and that it was in June for Westwood. Do you have a sense of when other, these other districts took it? Like, is it, is it consistent across the state when MCAS are administered?
Yeah, no. So that's a great question, and that's something that we definitely are, will start digging around and asking some of our colleagues in some of these other districts, too, to try to figure out how, how did other places do it? And if that has any bearing on, on the results that we're seeing. The state gives you windows in which you can schedule your MCAS assessments at the middle school level, and particularly, particularly at eighth grade, trying to schedule four of them throughout the spring. We were trying to give the students plenty of sort of rest and recovery in between each one, and so we did push the civics test pretty much as far in the window as we could go. And so that will be a conversation we have this year. Is that the right strategy, or do we move it up closer to the other MCAS assessments so that it's not happening in June? But if the trade-off too, then will you get very stressed and tired students if we push them closer together?
I feel like, and I could be misremembering this because last spring is now kind of a blur. There's a capstone project or something that happens in eighth grade as well. I feel like right around the same timeframe. So it does get really busy for everybody.
It gets busy, and that's another question, too. There, so the civics project, the eighth grade civics project.
Yeah, sorry.
It's a big, authentic project that we love to be able to do, and when you look at the civics content standards, it's just as many content standards as any other curriculum, and we're always hearing about, like, it's too much to fit in a year. How do you teach all of this content, all of these standards? And then in civics, we're also taking a decent amount of instructional time to make sure that we are having a meaningful civics action project. So, yeah.
And they are really cool.
I know. There's so much learning there that, that maybe doesn't get captured on the test.
Yeah.
More to find out there. Disaggregating the data. You can go ahead, Tim.
Sure.
So again, this is where we have really strong performance in the overall, and then when we break out and look at. when we break out and look at different subgroups, we do see these gaps. And so the data that we're going to show tonight and highlight tonight is looking at our aggregate results in comparison to our high-needs subgroup. So that subgroup, it's designated, the high-needs label is from DESI, and that includes our low-income students, students with disabilities, and English language learners. And we use that to help us understand where our gaps are in, in all subjects. So you'll see that we do have these persistent gaps that I've mentioned. I also want to say that as a district at the school level, we do examine the data disaggregated in different ways, we're looking at gender gaps, we do look at the data disaggregated by race. It gets tricky to do that district-wide because our subgroup sizes tend to be very small, especially at our elementary level, so we don't always have the same subgroups to, to compare across the district, so the high-needs subgroup is, is our proxy for looking at subgroup performance. So what to notice here, the first line, the first row here is grades three through eight in the aggregate, we have 71% of our students meeting and exceeding expectations. When you pull out just that high-needs subgroup, it drops down to 39% of students. The scaled score similarly lags, the SGP is still strong, but it's lagging. And we see that repeated again in grade 10, for all students, we have 77%. For the high-needs subgroup, it does drop to 48%. This is the longitudinal look over the last few years, at the top in the more pastel tones, that's the aggregate scores, the yellow is grades three through eight, and the green is 10, grade 10. And then the two darker lines at the bottom are our high-needs subgroup, so this is not Westwood to the state, this is Westwood to Westwood, where we're seeing these gaps. I am happy to see a rebound, what looks like, in that grade 10 high-needs subgroup, and that's a pattern that we're going to see repeated in the next couple of charts, where last year, we did see some grade 10 scores, the aggregate scores dipped, the dips were amplified in the high-needs subgroup, but also the rebounds were amplified in that high-needs subgroup too, which is good to see. Here we are in math, not much to add there, same story. And the date over time, there, there's where you see that grade 10 dip, but also a really strong rebound this year. And in science, science is actually the place where we're closest together, the gap is, is narrowest in science, there is no SGP again in the science. And over time, again, we see that the five through eight, we saw it in the three through eight data in math and, and literacy, the gaps remain pretty, pretty parallel, there, there's not a lot of gap closing going on there, but we see that grade 10 really big jump this year after a couple of years of declining data. So what our work is now is to dig into that, to see what we can learn from what's been happening, particularly at the high school and leading up to grade 10, to start to narrow some of these gaps. And then, pretty soon, I'm going to talk about next steps in general, but when we're thinking about next steps for our achievement gaps and for our, our subgroups, it's less about the different, the specific content standards, we're not, it's not necessarily that we didn't teach these standards enough or those standards enough, when we're looking at persistent gaps over time in all subject areas and all grades, it's really about the environment, the learning environment, the general pedagogy. And so that is where you see our strategic plan for the district, really lifting up database decision-making, creating universal support, universal design supports for all students, making sure that we're targeting students' needs, and ensuring alignment between the curriculum, the best practices, and the instruction that's happening in the classroom. So those are some of the systemic things that we are working on to address the, the gaps that we see.
Quick back question, about what percentage of students are in that high-needs group? About ballpark? I'm sure it varies by level, but.
Give me one second, I can.
And is the difference, the narrow gap in science compared to say, ELA and math, is that, is that across the board if you looked at other districts, or is that anomaly more here that we've got?
Yeah, what I'll say is, you know, we have looked, let me answer the other district question first while I'm, while I'm pulling the data. You know, we actually looked at cross-district comparisons for high-needs subgroups, it's really challenging to do that because the definition of high-needs is low-income, students with disabilities, English language learners, and the socioeconomic status, the, sort of the level of students, like how that ratio can change based a lot from community to community, so cross-community comparisons aren't really valid in that area. To answer the question about the group size. Sorry, my machine is spinning right now, it's picking exactly the wrong time, so there we go. So for grades three through eight. So our overall aggregate population is 1,315 students that were tested, our high-needs subgroup is 441, so that's roughly 30-ish percent.
Okay.
Somewhere around there. And if I look at grade 10, I'm assuming it's comparable. It's 226 students, 50, so it's a little bit lower, so it's in like the, what, 20, low 20 percentile somewhere, somewhere around there.
Thank you.
So the next steps from here to mention, we haven't had too much time to dig into the data, we're also, I mean, schools are always busy places, but we are, department and building leaders will be digging into this, we have several department meetings happening tomorrow with the, the early release day, to dig into the standards, the item analysis, looking at the curriculum and instruction and seeing, how does this triangulate with the other data that we have, how does this match? And that's done at the very granular, like the student level, we're looking at for a particular student, what do we see about all these data points, and how does that inform what the teacher is doing at the classroom, all the way up from the class to the grade to the, to the school and the system. So that is the work that is ongoing and determining the next step. Some things we already, you know, have the eye on, I think, I'm thinking about mid-school math at the middle school level. We know that last year was the first year of implementation, our work in the year ahead is to really dig in and make sure that we are giving teachers what they need to be able to implement that curriculum with fidelity. And then if there are things that, that's okay, particularly, I'm thinking about the civics data that we have received, that's an area that hasn't necessarily been on our radar before, and so how do we find out more to determine our next steps there?
Yeah, and then finally, we just wanted to share just some additional data. Caitlin just talked about triangulation, I wanted to lift up the chronic absenteeism, we talked some about chronic absenteeism last year, particularly to pull that out at the high school level. You can see that second, you know, our, this is both our all-students, lowest performing is another subgroup that's used in the accountability metric, that's essentially the lowest performing quartile, lowest 25% based upon historical MCAS data. You can see that our rate dropped from 11% to 9% in the aggregate, but dropped substantially from 34% to 9.3 for our lowest performing subgroup. This is one of these areas, and I hope you don't mind me sharing, we, when we, it, sometimes it's around what happens in the classroom, sometimes it's around policy. And so when we looked at this last year, we put a spotlight on it, and we looked at our attendance policies as it relates to student privileges at the high school, and we know that students will have a really wonderful way of walking right up to the lines we set for them. And so the lines we set for them allowed them to maintain privileges while being chronically absent. And so we pulled back a little bit on our absence policies, voila, we saw remarkable improvement. But I would also say that improvement, I think, is reflected in our achievement scores, right? We saw that, you know, kids are in school more, kids perform better academically, like that is part of the reason there's a highlight on this. That is surely not, not the sole determining factor, right? But it's, it's nice to see those two things go hand in hand with each other, so.
And then the other graph across the bottom, this year, at the K-5 level, we implemented a new universal screener, the M-Class screener, not to be confused with the MCAS test. We are continuing in grade six through eight with our STAR screener, so we do have a universal screener in place for math and literacy, grades K through eight. And so this is another source of data for each grade level, each school, we are able to look at who at the beginning of the year is meeting the benchmarks, and who is flagging, who, who's popping up, and you see those yellow and red categories, yellow is at risk for struggle, and red is very, very much at risk for struggle. And so we plan out our interventions, our math and literacy interventions around this data, and make sure that we're progress monitoring students and providing them with the supports they need. So this is, I could have put like 17 of these in the presentation, but I figured it was enough data for one night, just to show you sort of what it looks like, what we're doing right now. And actually, for families at home, we, again, we didn't want to inundate with data, the MCAS results came out and were sent home at the end of last week, if families haven't received them yet, they should, you know, maybe the holiday put a little damper in it, but they should be receiving them right now. Next week, we will be sending home the universal screener, K through eight, math and literacy data for students, so families can expect to see their own child's report. And as always, when you get these reports, parents should never hesitate to reach out to their child's teacher to ask for more information, I know we have conferences coming up in the next few weeks, that's a great place to ask questions or talk about what you, what you're seeing, and folks can always come to me, but I, I usually have to send people back to the, the teacher or the principal at the school to, to get the inside scoop on what, what's going on with their kiddo, but we always want people to reach out and ask if they see anything that's confusing or surprising or that is not making sense.
You saw those big jumps in our high-needs groups in 10th grade, is that because of less, I mean, do you think it's?
Yeah, I mean.
Because of absenteeism dropping?
You know, I, I, I don't think I could statistically say with certainty that there, you know, there's a strict correlation there, right? But I also don't think it's a complete coincidence either. And so, I mean, and that's another place we're going to dig into a little bit more, like you'd have to get granular, like the individual student data level, like if you were to compare student absence with performance, and how does that look like compared to historical student absence levels and performance? But it, it's enough that makes us want to look at it a little more deeply.
That's 18 days, it's 10%?
10%, yeah, 18 days, yeah. All right, we've hit the end of the MCAS presentations, we've done questions and discussion along the way, but Adam, just if there's anything further from the committee.
Thank you, I appreciate the time that goes into these presentations, and I know that this is how we've always done it. I don't know that it's the most effective way to do it, I find the comparisons to other schools to be interesting, but in terms of like, helping us to make data-driven decisions, I don't find it particularly helpful. I know the same comment was made at this time last year about looking at the achievement gaps and talking about next steps, and I don't recall that ever kind of coming back to the committee, which would empower us to make those data-driven decisions, particularly around budget time. Something I'm very concerned about right now is that nearly 40% of students at Pine Hill are not meeting expectations in math or ELA. So if we're talking about comparison, that puts us more aligned with other towns like Dedham or Canton than it does with the other elementary schools in town. And it's not an anomaly, it seems to be a trend. So I think it's important to know why, but I think it's important to address it and figure out how to support these students, to get them closer, to close that gap, because it's been there for a while.
Yeah, I appreciate that comment, and I think that, one of the things I do want to lean into related to that, right? So we, we only have two years' worth of Pine Hill data, because Pine Hill hasn't existed as an entity prior to two years, right? And so one year is a, is a statement, two years becomes a trend, or two years starts potentially a trend, right? And I think to your point about informing budget-based conversations, right? There are, what I will acknowledge is that there are demographic differences across schools right now, but I think that also provokes a conversation about resource allocation relative to demographic differences. So that's something that's on our radar, that we, I think, will can, will can and will be talking more about when we get to budget time.
Yeah, I mean, a couple thoughts related to that, I think, if you look back at like the ELA data, going back to Hanlon, in 2019 and 2021, Hanlon was super high, like up over 80%, arguably the top performing in the district. And then something happened in 2022, so, you know, well before the Pine Hill school, and there was a dip, and it's never come back up. So I do feel like there is data beyond the two years, and I know that there is a large percentage of high-needs students at the Pine Hill school, and that's going to impact all of the conversations. But we also have a commitment to equity and providing students with the resources that they need. And I'm feeling like it's long overdue, and I feel like it probably should have been done last year, and I, I take some responsibility for that as a school committee member.
When you say it should have been done, you mean the deep dive into, into Pine Hill in particular?
Yeah, because it existed last year and the year before. And I think we are being sensitive to not wanting to compare one school to another or to highlight subgroups that are struggling, but I think we need to shine a light on it to be able to support those groups, to give them the resources that they need, and, you know, hopefully sooner rather than later. So I guess my point is, I'd love to continue the conversation to know, you know, what's happening beyond just talking about it kind of once a year.
Sort of related, but separate from that, I was, as we were kind of going through this, I'm trying to follow along on the handout, and I guess I would be interested to know if we take like a, and I don't know what others call it cohort or subgroup or a GPC or like whatever the, the thing, but I was like, okay, so if we took one particular like grade five, right, in 2025, then they would be grade four in 2020, and kind of go all the way back? Am I missing, like, where do we track the performance of each grade per like ELA, you know, math, science?
Meaning the same group of students as they progress through the grade?
Yeah, am I missing?
Yeah, that's what SGP is designed to do.
Yeah.
So the student growth percentile, where they are vertically on that bubble chart is, essentially tracks how that same group of students does over time longitudinally.
Okay. I just, I don't see the years, so I guess that's why I'm like.
Yeah, yeah, the SGP is essentially a composite compilation.
Okay.
Of the two previous year's performance.
Okay.
I'm wondering though, if you're, if, if what you're getting at is, is more of the work that we do in our classrooms every day and, and throughout the year, so, MCAS happens in the spring, we get the results the following fall, the teachers that have those stu-, you know, it's kind of a, a look, a retrospective on, on where kids were, but we have our universal assessments, our local assessments, our unit tests, all the things, all the assessments that are happening formatively and semitively throughout the year, where we are tracking student growth and progress towards master.
I think another way of presenting the information that I think you're trying to get at is if you did a similar bar chart, right? But instead of saying eighth grade math, it would be math, and then it would be, you know.
Class of 2032.
Third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, right? And then you could track one grade's progress through the MCAS and not just look at the SGP.
Yeah, it's, there is a question, I know the state has. Yeah, yeah, you know, exactly, yeah.
Yeah.
What the state has tried to do when they recalibrated MCAS a number of years ago is to have, that, that was something that was actually never really a valuable metric for years, up until maybe like four or five years ago, because the difficulty level and the way that they normed each test, particularly in grade 10, was very different than how it was in the other grade levels, and so to draw that kind of meaningful comparison longitudinally in a cohort model, the baseline assumption of performance was different from grade to grade, so it made that kind of analysis not meaningful or valuable. The state has claimed, and I think for the most part, it's, it's pretty true, that they've sort of normed across grades now, so it is something we could look at. That's part of the reason though, why we look at state trend data, because if you are seeing like statewide a dip in grade seven, for example, when we look at the cohort, is that dip because of something that happened locally in the cohort performance, is that dip because, so there's something about the grade seven test at the statewide level? And that's why SGP kind of normalizes for some of those, that statistical noise in terms of the difficulty of the test at the state level, but we can certainly look at, look at that from a, a class cohort perspective as well.
Yeah.
I'm not sure if it's going to yield anything different, but I can do a little, we can do a little digging into that.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about, you know, I think like parents receive, for example, their child's score, and then, you know, they can take the time to kind of go back and see what the progression has been, and I know there's the little list. But it would be inter-, I just think it could be helpful and interesting for, for folks to then be able to say, well, how did the grade do though? Is this, you know, my kid that had a dip, or was it the grade? And it kind of ties. And it kind of ties back into what you're saying around, okay, if we're looking at class of, I don't even know, where are we, twenty, twenty-nine, like whatever it is, and, you know, and versus thirty and so forth, to kind of get at the trend that you're thinking about.
Right.
Like, is it the whole grade or is it one particular school? You have to kind of pull that part out, but...
Right.
Yep.
I think that would be an interesting way of doing it. I don't know, I mean, if you're saying that the testing is not consistent between grades, right? Meaning like third-grade M-CAS is much easier than fourth-grade M-CAS, which is much more difficult, you know? If that's the case, then I'm not sure how informative tracking that would be, but if they have, you know, corrected for that, I mean, it's another piece of data that might be worth looking at.
Yeah, they have for the most part, yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Anything else on M-CAS? School calendar?
Yeah, so this is a first look at the school calendar for 26, 27. I want to acknowledge that this is going to be an extra-long summer, because Labor Day next year is as late as it possibly can be, and it was as early as, Labor Day was September first this year, it's September seventh next year, so that creates extra time in the summer. So the draft calendar the committee has in front of, in front of you, would have teachers' report back on August 31st, would have students' first day on September 2nd, and the 180th day of school would be Friday, June 18th, which is late, but that's what happens when Labor Day is September 7th, and that's kind of where things land. So we're not, I'm not looking for a vote from the committee tonight, but this is just sort of put it out there, if there's anything that you want to flag related to this. This is essentially just the start date, the end date, the holidays and the breaks put in there.
So I did have a question. I did look through the contract. We contrashew, we don't have to give off federal holidays to teachers, do we?
We do not.
Okay, because the reason I ask is that Juneteenth is on a Saturday, and the Friday is a federal holiday. I mean, I don't think teachers are going to want, I know they're going to want to go home, so, but I'm just, that was the question.
Yeah, no, we did have that conversation, right? So the Juneteenth holiday at the state level is recognized on Saturday.
Oh.
At the federal level is recognized on Friday, so...
Oh, Friday the 18th.
Friday the 18th.
Yeah.
But for the state of Massachusetts is recognized on Saturday, the 19th.
I think we historically have followed state, I think.
Yeah, but we, independent of that, we don't have to, you know...
No, we don't have to.
We talk to them.
Yeah, the contracts all, I believe, have some kind of like asterisk note that says if observed on a, like for the holidays, something like that.
Say that again?
I think the contracts, collective bargaining agreements, have like an asterisk on some of these dates that may be flexible, that say if falls on a school day, something like that, which means that if it doesn't fall on a school day, it's not observed in part of the contract. We don't have to give it off that way.
The reason, the other reason I ask, I mean, well, as you, the other reason I ask is I've thought about Veterans Day, abusing that, this probably wouldn't fly, using that as the PD day, in theory, because that would get us an extra day. That may not fly with the union, because their kids are going to be off, but it's just an idea I've always had. It's kind of a similar time of day after Thanksgiving. It gives us a day in the calendar. I don't know. It'd be unorthodox, but it would get us a day back generally. I know you like getting days back.
I'm like, let's start the whole thing a week earlier. Let's go to a week in four weeks.
Anyway, but anyway, I digress. I don't want to talk about that.
I'm with you, Tony.
Remind me again, when did the early release days get added to this?
Not until the...
Later.
Yeah.
Later?
Yeah, much later.
Okay.
In the spring, right?
Yeah, sometime in the spring, yeah. The reason we want to get this out is basically so people can start making summer vacation plans.
Camp and...
Okay. I mean, October already looks better, even without the early release days in here. I feel like it's...
Yeah, I will mention... Yeah, another one of the holidays falls on Saturday next year, which is one fewer day off in the fall.
It does get to stay back, yeah.
All right, any other questions about the calendar?
All right, so we'll vote on it next meeting. And if anyone from the public has any comments, just send those our way as well.
Yeah, I'll say the calendar will be posted with the mid-school committee materials on the website, so that people can actually look at it, not just speculate.
A proposed new policy for the competency determination, this is related to...
Yeah, so this is the first reading of the policy. So after the passage of question two, we had a conversation where we adjusted our graduation policy that removed the reference to M-CAS's graduation requirement. The State Board of Ed back in May voted to amend its regulations on the competency determination, is requiring districts to adopt a competency determination policy, and they didn't release guidance till July of 2025 or something they wanted adopted for this year's seniors. And so we are putting this forward as quickly as we can. Thank you to MAS C for releasing their policy template in August 2025. Thank you to our high school team for putting language together on this. Essentially, our policy meets the regulations by saying that students must show two things, a mastery of skills in ELA, math, and science, and satisfactory completion of relevant coursework aligned to the standards in those areas. And for students in the class of 2027 and beyond, that also includes US history. So if you look at the draft policy, it lists the series of coursework. We did put a caveat on there that says, as of the 2025-26 school year, the following course is offered in the Westwood High School Program of Studies aligned with the frameworks that meet the requirements. Any future revisions will be reflected in subsequent versions of the program studies. That's so, for example, we changed the name of a course, we add a course, we don't have to go back and do a whole-scale policy revision, we're just referencing the program of studies in relation to that. To demonstrate mastery, you can see it's nearly identical language across all of the content areas, where essentially students who took and demonstrated mastery of the M-CAS prior to January of 2025, that's consistent with the state regulations here. If not, they're required to earn an average passing grade on summative assessments. Essentially, our grading policies are designed so that in order to pass the class, you need to do well enough on the summative assessments. But we also wanted to make sure that we provided an out for students, so there is a portfolio review available for students that may not meet there, because we want to make sure that we provide all students the opportunity to meet the mastery area of the competency determination. There is also a provision in the policy, and this is the language from MAS C around students with disabilities, about needing to provide a free and appropriate education, and that for students in out-of-district placements must meet the requirements of the CD policy of our district. And a discussion of the CD must be part of the IP team's transition meeting. There's also a piece about ELL. For late-enrolling students, this may be students that transfer in in, say, junior year, senior year, something like that. We want to make sure that there are provisions there that can be done through transcript review, meeting the standard for substitute courses, or in very rare cases, actually take the M-CAS. That's the only place that we're allowed to use it. And then there's a provision there that we have to do by regulation for students going back to 2003 that may have been denied a diploma due to M-CAS, so that is in the policy as well. So this is a first reading. I know, May, in our conversation, we talked about whether or not we just move to a second reading and vote at the November meeting, or if we go through the full three readings, but happy to entertain any questions this evening or comments.
I suggest we waive the third reading and just do it next time.
Okay, everyone's okay with that?
All right. So we'll waive. We'll just vote after the second reading.
Great, thank you.
All right. And then one more proposed revision, this is the security cameras in school, this is a second reading.
Yeah, there's no change from the last, again, this is just a minor tweak to the policy that would extend our security camera policy to school transportation vehicles. And the recommendation was to waive the second reading and vote at this evening, or waive the third reading.
Waive the third reading, right.
Sorry, waive the third reading and vote at this evening.
So does anyone have any further discussion on the cameras? Nope. Okay. All right, so moving on to action items. The first is a vote on the September 11th meeting minutes. Can I get a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Okay. A vote on the Westwood Women's Club Scholarship. This is, do you want to talk a little bit about this? This is, is this a, this is a new scholarship, right? That the Westwood Women's Club?
Yes. This is a, sorry about that. So this is a new scholarship that will be awarded to a female student who has contributed to her community through service and activism, and the scholarship would run for five years at $500 per year.
Okay, great. So can I get a vote to, vote on whether to accept, I guess it should be a vote to accept the scholarship?
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. Can I get a vote to revise policy ECAF, security cameras in school?
Still moved.
Second. Do we need to, do we need to vote to waive the third reading?
I mean, it's the committee's own, I think you can do is one consolidated vote. It's probably best to do a motion to waive the third reading and accept the policy as proposed, just to cover our bases.
So can I get a motion to waive the third reading and to accept the policy as proposed?
Still moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And finally, I need a motion to approve Superintendent Pavovar to the Tech Board of Directors. I think we have to do this every year.
Still moved.